Good day to everyone. The Committee on Health and Demography is here by call to order. We have two items in our agenda today. First, it's a privileged speech of Senator Pia Ketanu regarding the DOH vaccination and expanded immunization bills. In line with this, we will also tackle the reemergence of the polio in our country. Second, in our agenda, we have the anti-hospital detention bills filed by Senators Ontiveros and Pimentel. May we now request the committee secretary to acknowledge the resource persons present today, Miss Committee Secretary kindly?
Good afternoon. For the topic on the immunization program, these are our resource persons. From the Department of Health, Dr. Anthony Kalibo. From the Philippine Foundation for Vaccination, we have Dr. Luningning Villa, Dr. Salvacion Gachalian, who's also representing the Philippine Pediatric Society, the Pediatric Infectious Disease Society of the Philippines. We have Dr. Anna Lennel Lopez from the UP National Institutes of Health, Dr. Celia Carlos, OIC Director of the Research Institute for Tropical Medicine. Ah, okay. From the League of Provinces, we have Governor Presbitero Velasco. We also have Governor Ben Everdone. From PhilHealth, Dr. Gilberto de Guzman. And from the Philippine Coalition of Consumer Welfare, we have Ricardo Samaniego. For the topic on prohibiting the detention of patients and withholding of cadavers, these are our resource persons. Attorney Rodell Flores of the DOH, Dr. Rosendo Swalog of the DOH, Dr. Gilberto de Guzman of PhilHealth. From the GISIS, we have Attorney Giovanni Lin Kikoy Marine and Dr. Claro Del Prado. From the SSS, we have Attorney Joseph De Sunea. From the DSWD, Art Bautista. From the PCSO, Dr. Larry Cedro. From the Philippine Alliance of Patients Organization, Mr. Chris Manios. From the National Commission on Muslim Filipinos, we have Director Alian Maraber, Attorney Sonora Alonto, and Rahima Sulaiman. And from the Philippine Mortuary Association, we have Ferdinand Reyes and Mr. Roberto Gregorio. Thank you.
Thank you, Committee Secretary. To start off, we will discuss first the DOH vaccination and expanded immunization program. Now, let me give my brief opening remarks. Our children are the most valuable resource we have, and yet they are also the most vulnerable citizens of this country. We must therefore strive to protect the right of our children to survive and to grow. We are now in a dismal and alarming state as the Department of Health declared the reemergence of polio in the country. The Philippines has been polio-free since October of 2020... No, no, 2000, year 2000, last 19 years ago. With the last wild polio virus case reported in 1993, or 26 years ago. The outbreak demands for our urgent and collective action to protect children from being infected. This imposes the need to increase immunization coverage to stop infectious diseases transmission in the Philippines. This is not the right time to point fingers at each other. This is not the right time to debate. Instead, we should all carry the same message: Get your children vaccinated. Sa mga magulang, please para po ito sa mga anak natin, ligtas po ang magpabakuna. Libre po ito, importante po na mapakunahan ang ating mga anak para maproteksyonan sila mula sa mga sakit. Iwalainyo po 'yung takot ninyo sa dengbaxya. Iba po itong ano, magtiwala po kayo sa ating gobyerno. Let me acknowledge Senator Vice Chairperson, Senator Nancy Binay, ma'am. Magandang hapon. I will continue. Vaccines are important so we can save our children and give them an opportunity to grow up healthy and improve their quality life. Immunization is scientifically proven way to prevent and eliminate life-threatening infectious diseases. Vaccine makes the body immune from an infectious disease by stimulating the body's own immune system to give optimal protection against infections. I call on the DOH to intensify its immunization campaign and improve its health promotion. We must increase the confidence of parents towards vaccination. Information is key, it will save lives. I urge the DOH to visit the most isolated and poor communities and ensure efficient distribution of vaccines. Children in poor communities who are deprived of so many basic needs are the most vulnerable and are in need of preventive care. The government must do its part. Sa mga magulang naman po, magtiwala po tayo sa bakuna at panatiliin po nating malinis ang ating mga kapaligiran. And let us ensure proper hygiene and sanitation. We acknowledge that the dengbaxya vaccination was a setback. We should not let that happen again. To address this, I have filed Senate Bill 398. Senator Villia also filed a similar bill, Senate Bill 662. Our bills not only seek to add vaccine-preventable diseases to immunization program, the bills also limit the power of the Secretary of Health to determine vaccine-preventable diseases to be added to the program. This is to avoid what happened in the case of dengbaxya where the Secretary of Health overruled the recommendation of experts. Moving forward, the DOH should do its part. Inform and vaccinate, the parents should also play their role. Libre po ang magpabakuna. Papakunahan po natin ang ating mga anak para naman po ito sa kanilang kapakanan. Together, we should strive to give each and every child an equal opportunity to survive. Alright, let us now proceed with the discussions. First, may I acknowledge Senator Nancy Binay? If you have any question first, may I ask the DOH to give us an update on the reemergence of polio? Kumusta naman po 'yung mga bata na nagkakaroon ng polio? At sino po ang tumitingin sa kanila? The DOH confirmed on September 20 that it found a second polio case in Laguna Province, more than 770 kilometers from the first case found in Lanau del Sur on September 14, which involved a five-year-old boy who had a weak immune system and started experiencing the onset of paralysis on October 25. Pero nalilito po ako, kasi may nabasa po ako na sinabi naman po ni Yusek Dumingo na wala bang outbreak? Ano ba talaga ang totoo? Way different? Pero meron akong nabasa kanina eh, totoo ba yun? Or the same, ano pa rin po ba kayo? Meron ba talaga ang outbreak o wala?
Good afternoon.
Before, let me acknowledge Senator Riza Ontiveros. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and of course Senators of the Committee. Sir, for an outbreak to be defined, there has to be a number of cases that would be detected compared to previous years that did not have any case at all. So the mere presence of these two cases found in Lanau del Sur and also in Calabarzon makes the situation that we have an outbreak already. Because compared to the previous years, there was no detected polio cases of that. And at the same time, the polio-related event of a virologic finding in the sewage of Manila also added up also that indeed that the threat of polio has reemerged in the Philippines.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Senator.
Just to add to your request, pwede ho magbigay kayo ng update dun sa three outbreaks, namely measles, polio, and dengue?
Go ahead.
If it's available. If not, can you just submit it to the committee?
Mr. Chair and Madam Senator, I will be providing the updates on the other related outbreaks such as measles and dengue. But as far as the polio outbreak is concerned, I have prepared some slides to look into the efforts already being done, particularly at Ground Zero, which is where the Manila area districts have been affected. This is where the finding of the Research Institute for Tropical Medicine on the sewage canal sample detected with polio.
Dr. Kalibo, before we go dun sa specific to polio, can you just give us a background on the... Ano na ba 'yung situation natin when it comes to vaccination? Ilan talaga 'yung hindi nagpapabakuna sa ngayon?
For the polio vaccine coverage, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators, our coverage in 2018 was around 66%. This was a drop from its 2017 coverage, a third dose of oral polio from 71%. But the trend goes from 74 in 2014, 75 in 2015, down to 68% coverage on third dose of oral polio and in 68%. But 2018 had the lowest coverage of the third dose of oral polio vaccine. The third dose oral polio is the last to be given in our public health facilities, our rural health units and barangay health centers. And this is coupled with an inactivated polio vaccine, which is injected, not given orally. Unfortunately, the coverage compared to its oral polio counterpart is also very low. In 2016, wherein this was started, we only had 31% of children receiving the inactivated polio vaccine. In 2017, it was only 41%, and in 2018, it was only 33%. One of the deterring factors why this proved to be very difficult is that it is in tandem with the third dose of the Pentavalent DPT Hib and Hep A B vaccine. So multiple vaccinations may also deter some parents to allow it because dalawantusok po 'yung nangyayari and it's a bit uncomfortable already to the infant. This is a three-and-a-half-old infant, ma'am, receiving two vaccines. So those that have reported being covered in the IPV also receive as well the inactivate, the DPT Pentavalent. Of course, supply issues may also compound the problem. So this is, ma'am, the picture on the oral polio coverage and the inactivated.
For measles, huh?
For measles? For the first dose of measles, in 2014, we had 67%. And there have been improvements of the first dose of measles. This is given at nine months, reaching as high as 79% in 2015. It went down to 75% in 2016 and going down to 70% in 2017, further going down to 67% in 2018. Now, this is where the need for a second dose to be given at one-year-old or 12 months to make sure that the full protective effect of two dose measles vaccination will ensure protection of the child. Unfortunately, the 2018 measles coverage for the second dose was only around 58%. So I think this was also a reason why we had really measles outbreak that happened, of which the government addressed this with supplemental immunization activity that has happened all over the country, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Senator Riza.
Thank you, Chair. Follow-up po dun sa issue ng supply na binanggit po ni Dr. Kalibo. So DOH centrally procures all the vaccines needed in the EPI and then distributes them to all the rural health units through the regional offices and the PHO. Have you experienced vaccine supply problems in the RHUs?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and for the question, Madam Senator. The distribution system is correct as described by the Madam Senator, Senator Ontiveros, that this is centrally procured and distributed through our regional warehouses, which contains the cold chain facility. Cold chain because this requires a set of temperature requirement to make sure that it is of good quality and of course, it will have a good effect intended for immunoprotection. Once they are already at the regional warehouses, cold chain facility, they're distributed to the provinces and reaching up to the rural health unit or the barangay health centers. This is where there are logistical delays that may happen. And we also confirm that the recent drug availability survey done by our pharmaceutical division has validated that there were instances that some vaccines were actually not available in certain parts of the country. Unfortunately, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators, I don't have the data because it is from a different office, but we shall be submitting this to the committee for perusal and information.
Please do so, Dr. Kalibo. If the good Chair could direct DOH to submit that report to the committee tracing the process of central procurement and distribution at kung saan po nagkakaroon ng problema so that the committee can assist the department. And speaking po, Mr. Chair of cold chain, how do we ensure that the cold chain is not broken? Tinatraak po ba ng DOH 'yung delivery ng vaccines? At 'yung mga LGUs po ba natin, equipped ba sila para magobserve ng cold chain protocols?
To answer, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators, each of the local government unit would have their own vaccine monitoring teams. The vaccine monitoring team is led by the municipal health officer or the RHU physician and together with him or with her would have the public health nurses and the public health midwives who have been trained also by the regional coordinator for the expanded program on immunization. At the regional office of the DOH or the Center for Health Development, there's a medical officer or program manager and a nurse coordinator as well. And they also have another technical officer that handles cold chain management training. The vaccine ref refrigerators are also centrally procured and these are also monitored because there are vaccine ref thermometers. And in the visits of the vaccine monitoring teams, we're able to also attest that there's a good temperature being maintained to make sure that these vaccines will not have breach in terms of their efficacy or quality. So I think we may require from our Center for Health Development Office the most updated report on the status of cold chain management monitoring as well, Madam Chair, Madam Senator, and Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Kalibo.
Going back to the polio, for the record, can you tell us the symptoms and what should the parents do if symptoms surface? And what is the ideal schedule for polio vaccination? And third, the resurgence of polio virus transmission is very alarming. What measures is the DOH implementing particularly for this case? How many are we vaccinating for the rest of the year? And the last case of wild polio virus in the Philippines was in 1993. Why type of polio were reported? What, why type of polio were reported in the new cases? Are our vaccines still responsive or applicable to the polio virus that were found?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the question. I will answer the schedule, the recommended schedule for the immunizing infants for oral polio vaccine. As for the symptomatology, I will also request my colleagues from the Philippine Pediatric Society, they are the clinical experts as well, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators, to add on what I may provide to the committee as well. The recommended immunization schedule for oral polio vaccine or the inactivated polio vaccine, which is being given in private clinics in some settings, starts as early as six weeks old or one-and-a-half month. This is combined with the administration of a Pentavalent vaccine, which is the DPT Hib and Hep A B, given in one-shot and the oral polio given orally. The minimum interval for the next dose of the oral polio requires at least four weeks, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators. That means that following that regimen, it is given at six weeks, 10 weeks, and 14 weeks. And the 14-week administration is combined with an inactivated polio vaccine, which I mentioned was introduced in the Philippines in 2016. Now, polio vaccination in government settings stops at that period, while in private settings, this is actually continued as called booster vaccination, which may happen around one-year-old to one-year and six months. And of course, it's also being given at age, between ages four, five, and six. So there's actually some practice differences. And of course, the product is also different, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators, because oral polio vaccine is no longer being administered in private clinics. It is only being given in public health facilities.
Dr. Kalibo, iba parang sa private, if I remember it correctly, with my children, parang hindi nung ata nag-oral polio eh, 'yung mga five-in-one shots na ang ginagawa sa private. But sa government, hindi pa ina-adopt. Are you recommending that we adopt that kind of system?
For that, Mr. Chair and Madam Senator, we will look into the feasibility of such an approach and this will go through a health technology assessment process. This will require a cost benefit and cost effectiveness in terms of how government funding will be able to support such shift from the current Pentavalent oral polio approach to a Pentavalent that may contain already the polio injected not anymore by oral. But of course, this has to be in tandem with expert consultation. And I think we have here our resource persons at that, Mr. Chair and Madam Senator.
So as a parent, pareho lang po ba 'yung oral tsaka dun sa ini-injection? Or is there a difference?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and the two Senators present here. I'm from the Philippine Pediatric Society. I'm the current president of the Philippine Pediatric Society. The difference between the two is, first of all, the inactivated polio vaccine, 'yung po 'yung kasama sa five-in-one or six-in-one, is injectable. The oral polio vaccine obviously is orally administered. The IPV, or what we call the injectable polio, actually provides protection for the individual. The oral polio vaccine provides protection for the individual as well as for the community. So mas mataas po kasi 'yung mucosal immunity ng oral polio compared to IPV, kasi naano siya, nasashed siya. So yun na nag-aano ng herd immunity. That is why, for now, that we haven't really been declared polio-free as a world, I think it is too premature for the Philippines to shift to IPV na. We're actually giving the inactivated polio on the third dose of the oral polio vaccine because this will be a guarantee, parang insurance, as well as provide some kind of immunity to the type two kasi 'yung po vaccine ngayon, di ba, dalawa na lang 'yung polio na naman niya, types one and three, kasi nairadicate na rin dapat 'yung type two. So giving the IPV sa third dose ng oral polio vaccine, we're giving some form of immunity against type two to those who are naive, 'yung mga hindi naexposed sa type two. Kasi nga po, as was mentioned, it has been eradicated since 1993, 'yung wild type polio virus two.
Pero nabanggit ni Dr. Kalibo, sa private, hindi na nag-ora, tama po ba? Hindi na nag-ora, but it's because dahwala na nga.
It's not commercially available. So we have no choice but to give the inactivated polio vaccine, kasi hindi na po siya commercially available.
For example, katulad nung anak ko, kung hindi po siya nabigyan ng oral...
Okay na yun, protected siya.
Kahit wala ho siyang oral, kahit 'yung ano lang. But it doesn't protect the community?
Yes. The oral polio will provide herd immunity. Yun 'yung advantage ng oral polio vaccine.
So should we require 'yung private to give the oral?
Hindi naman ako, but we're encouraging our doctors to say that...
In light of the outbreak?
Sinasabi po namin, for their kids who are less than five years old, even if they have completed their vaccination with the inactivated polio vaccine, to allow the Department of Health to administer. Kasi there are studies also that show that giving multiple doses of the IPV, tapos nagbigay ka ng oral polio, nag-iincrease ang mucosal immunity. So okay lang, kung bigyan sila, okay to accept for those less than five years of age.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Senator Riza.
Thank you, Chair. Follow-up po, I think important point 'yung sinabi nyo na hindi commercially available ang OPV. So for the longer-term concern din ang committee, Mr. Chair, 'yung looking at possibilities of domestic production of necessary vaccines or medicines for that matter, just for the record, Mr. Chair. And then follow-up po dun sa binanggit ni Dr. Kalibo na health technology assessment, although related ito, Mr. Chair, dun sa ibang bills na titignan natin on expanding the number of vaccines. So under the UHC law, all new health interventions that will be funded by government or reimbursed by PhilHealth should have a positive health technology assessment. Right now, wala pa po tayong HTA Council, pero pag-organized na yun, I would guess na all new vaccines for inclusion into the program by law or by administrative fiat should have positive recommendations from the H-TAC. So for now, gusto ko lang po, Mr. Chair, request 'yung DOH o 'yung mga manufacturers mismo na i-furnish 'yung committee natin ng kopya nung HTAs or 'yung economic valuations down for these vaccines. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Kindly submitted to the committee. Any additional question? The polio virus was detected in the sewage systems of Davao and Intondo. The cases recorded was in Lanau and Laguna. What does this mean in terms of how widespread this outbreak is? How many cities and provinces are at high risk of polio? How much is your budget for this year to fight polio? How much will you be allotting for this year, for next year? And for the past years, the DOH warned that the vaccination coverage for third dose of oral polio vaccine, or OPV, has fallen below 95%, which is the target to ensure protection of population from the disease. DOH attributed the decline to vaccine scare because of the dengbaxya mess. In 2018, OPV vaccination coverage was only 66%. And what time or point did polio vaccine coverage went down? What did you do? And what did you fail to do that caused polio to reemerge? Hindi po ba dapat nung bumaba na ang immunization level for polio? Ay, naanticipate na po ito. Kasi ngayon, ang sitwasyon natin, reactivate tayo imbes na proactive. And other than polio, are there any other diseases that can still come back due to our low vaccine coverage? And do we have enough supply of polio vaccines for nationwide vaccination? And lastly, the zero-open defecation is important in our preventive campaign. Those who do not have toilets should have one in order to properly dispose of their waste? What is the target of our zero-open defecation program? And what is the status right now? How many? How many toilets have we provided to those who have none? How many Filipinos are still practicing open defecation? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the status of the oral polio coverage in terms of its previous years, in the slide I am flashing on the left, to your right, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators, we would see that the OPB3 coverage from 2008 to 2014 is slowly declining in the past decades. And hence, this is the reason why, in the previous years of the Department of Health, supplemental immunization activities were actually being conducted. This is in the form of a combined NACALT-DAS and LIHTAS-POLIO campaign. So I think this is not the first time that the Department of Health is going through a response to cases of a declining immunization coverage. So meron namang po, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators, that this are actually factored in on how to prepare for a remedy to the seemingly susceptible population of children who may be at risk because they have been missed out in the targeting or in the coverage of the vaccines. Since then, the Department of Health has also been adopting the "Reaching Every Child" or "Reaching Every Puro," "Reaching Every Barangay." It has morphed into many names already, but the concept is really to make sure that each and every child in the barangay would be sought by the barangay health worker, the public health midwives, and of course, with the team of the municipal health officer, to make sure that they will not be left out. And of course, they will be receiving the vaccine. So in the absence of a mass immunization campaign, this is already being done at the local government level. However, I think there has to be really a reconfigured strategy, how to effectively address this, because currently, it seems like it is reactive, meaning it dons always on the Department of Health. This information is something that we have to react to it. However, a good way to do this is to capacitate local government capability, let's say, that the terms "microplanning", and at the same time, looking into how they can effectively ensure that amongst themselves, they're able to track that in this month, this is supposedly the number of kids that we should have reached. How come we're only able to target only 60%? What happened to the 40%? Because the names of these children are actually in a logbook. The midwives call it a target client list. And unfortunately, this requires really a whole-of-society approach, particularly partnering with our barangay stakeholders, because this really happens at the community, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators. As for the...
Mr. Chair, Dr. Kalibo, hindi ho ba dapat ginawa niya ng template 'yung for the four-piece beneficiary? Because part ng kulatila for them to avail or be part of that program is kailangan talagang na-vaccinate 'yung mga anak nila. Hindi niyo ba ginawang template to? Or namomonitor niyo ba na talaga 'yung mga four-piece beneficiary natin eh nagpapavaccinate 'yung mga anak nila?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Madam Senator. I think with the information of the DSWD team, I think it's with a coordinating body that tracks on the compliance of the four-piece beneficiaries. They do have data on how good the vaccine coverage of children enroll in the four-piece program. So, but I am unable to show this, Madam Senator.
Hindi ho ba dapat the data should be coming from DOH? Kasi kayo 'yung nag-vaccinate dun sa... Or sino ba nag-incharge of? LGU ba yun? LGU? But hindi ba part dapat ng reporting sa inyo? Or wala ba kayo vetting process na kayo 'yung nagiging auditor dun sa data ng DSWD?
What goes up, Mr. Chair and Madam Senator, already compiled number of children regardless of their four-piece status. So we have to disaggregate pa po 'yung ganunpong data, kasi po sa aming Field Health Service Information System, or FHSIS, it does not distinguish which among the children who receive or actually four-piece or not. So I think there's another layer in that target client list that tracks the four-piece recipients as well.
And si DSWD 'yung mag-vet na ito, no? Not DOH?
I think, Madam Senator, the local government level also submits the four-piece enrolled families in terms of their compliance. There's a layer of reporting system here. But what I can tell, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators, that as far as transmitting the data from barangay to province, province to the regional office of DOH and up to the epidemiology bureau, it's actually for all those children who receive. So actually, ma'am, the statistics I'm showing is also from the epidemiology bureau, the FHSIS data. What seems to be an information that the committee may learn from is that it's been very challenging to maintain a good quality practice in terms of immunization in the community, because there are multitasking processes happening for a barangay health worker and a public health midwife. And even in terms of providing supportive supervision to make sure that planning how to avert a possible outbreak or how to improve coverage, this really requires, I term it as a technical assistance. Meaning, DOH should also look into, ma'am, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators, that beyond just procuring the vaccines, it has to also invest in the capacity of these local government units to improve on reaching every child and of course, planning further how to improve the coverage of the vaccines in terms of its population groups.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While the resurgence of polio is indeed alarming, DOH can, as it has done before, during particularly the Oplan Alis Disease days of the former Secretary Dr. Juan Flavier, again make us polio-free. Ano pong mga resources, tulong, suporta, ang kailangan ng department, so we can mobilize all sectors in that all-of-society approach that Dr. Kalibo mentioned to help regain people's trust in the vaccination program at para muli nating maitaboy ang polio at iba pang mga sakit. In a way, a catch-up program campaign para umabot tayo ulit sa dapatna floor na confidence and compliance ng mga dapat magpapakuna sa mga bata.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Madam Senator. I think the next slides will tell us the high-risk communities already in terms of polio. And Mr. Chair has also mentioned the possible reemergence of other infectious diseases. In the last few months, we have also discussed as well several cases of diphtheria emerging as well in some regions of the Philippines. I think there was a case of diphtheria in the Cordillera. And there was also an issue of the availability of a diphtheria antitoxin, because that will also be an important management for those diagnosed with diphtheria. Again, we look into really not just singling out any antigen that has been failing in terms of achieving a good coverage, but likewise, look into the entire picture. It's not just a single antigen that's of a concern, but actually look at the entire picture. Because right now, we're looking at it on a piecemeal basis. Bumababa ang measles coverage, ah baka maka measles outbreak. And when we had, bumababa pala 'yung polio coverage, so baka maka polio outbreak, et cetera. But clearly, the statistics has been really alarming. And I think it's more of really how a good complement of human resources will be able to master that momentum from top-down. Because right now, the immunization program is really understaffed. We only have at least at central level, Dr. Will Da Silva, the program manager, and Engineer Luzlin de Garcia, the cold chain manager. I myself as the officer in charge for the Children's Health Division. But we look at an immunization program all over the country and comparing this with our ASEAN neighbors, when they deal with immunization, it has a premium complement of human resources. In fact, our colleagues at the World Health Organization would tell us, "You're doing the most impossible thing. You have a big country to work with. You have a large population of infants that you need to cover. And yet, the technical capacity is just down to two persons at the central level. And at the regional office, you only have one medical officer and a nurse coordinator and at that, a cold chain manager."
Dr. Kalibo, have you requested for additional manpower?
We did, Mr. Chair and Madam Senator. In April of this year, we proposed for the creation of an immunization unit. Because clearly, we are unable to catch up already with the increasing demands of the country and of course, the threats of this reemergence of infectious diseases. So unfortunately, this was not approved. What was approved was the creation of items for oral health, which I don't mean that they're less of an importance. And of course, to also support, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators, the Republic Act 11148. So of that, we also had some additional human resource. But I think the immunization unit is something that is of prime importance. And it looks into really effective monitoring systems and at the same time, providing really timely technical assistance, particularly to local government units that may be at risk as well in terms of local health system vulnerability.
Dr. Kalibo, sir, in light of the present situation, maybe you can submit to the committee? Tita si Chair naman din ang magde-defend ng budget ng DOH, maka we can, you know, pwede itong mahabol for the 2020 budget.
We will, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators. We have prepared a temporary staffing pattern for the immunization unit, and we will do so, submit this to the committee.
Thank you, Dr. Kalibo. In 2017 report, COA flagged under distribution of vaccines from 2015 to 2017, which apparently affected our target of 95% immunization coverage rate. What is the status? Meron pa rin ba tayong hindi na-distribute na bakuna nung 2017 and 18? Ano ang dahilan sa mabagal na distribusyon? And then ito, given the apparent scare in vaccination caused by dengvaxia, what is a DOH's strategy to improve the access to immunization and reduce dropouts in the program? We should have a strategy because we need to shift to public sentiment and bring back confidence to vaccination. And aside from dengvaxia scare, do we still have inadequate service delivery, including accessibility issues, especially in hard-to-reach areas in the Philippines? How do you coordinate with the local government units? Sino po ang nagmomonitor sa isang lugar kung ilan na po ang nababakunan? Sino pa po ang hindi pa nababakunan? And how much is your budget for health promotion this year? How did you utilize it? What promotional campaigns have you conducted? And obviously, our campaign is not enough to encourage parents to have their children vaccinated and bring back the confidence to our immunization program. What we plan to do moving forward? What is the strategy of the DOH? And lastly, how is our school-based immunization? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the set of questions. As for the COA findings, I think we have acted on this on making sure that our central store at the national storage at the RITM has moved already its vaccine. I think the COA report is citing those vaccines that were found in the regional cold chain facility and not necessarily at the central store found in the RITM. What we worked on was communicating with the counterparts at the regional office to make sure that this reach timely at the facilities that will require them. And we're looking into also that the forwarder or the ones that deliver the vaccines should be able to deliver it as soon as possible. As I mentioned, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators, the monitoring system for cold chain also looks into the delivery processes, and we will furnish the committee about this. As far as the communication is concerned, the DOH has launched the Una Salahat Bakuna campaign. This is intensifying the efforts of the national government to make sure that every child is immunized. It's anchoring on the "Reaching Every Child", "Reaching Every Barangay", "Reaching Every Puro" strategy, as recommended by our stakeholders, that clearly, there is a need for the public to gain its trust, to reduce vaccine hesitancy. Now, I think the main challenge is that communication materials are very top-heavy, and this actually requires to dissipate at the ground level. And I think this has been the weakest link of us, particularly as a response in terms of the risk communication for dengvaxia. Admittedly, there are still some parents who may not be been well-informed that in terms of what vaccines are, in terms of its safety, and in terms of the facts versus what has been the misconceptions of the many. And again, Mr. Chair and Madam Senators, that clearly, to communicate this at the ground level really requires a good domino effect or a cascading effect or a scaling of process that at the barangay level, the community members are actually well-informed. There are models already demonstrated by our colleagues from the United Nations Children's Fund, wherein that if there's a proactive partnership between local governments, from the chief executive to the barangay health workers, the trust of the community for vaccination actually increases. And at the same time, the health worker satisfaction to deliver the vaccines to their clients is also improved, because clearly, it becomes an appreciation that the government is delivering the services. And the community members are also happy that they are receiving the necessary services. But again, if the communication lines are not well-established and misconceptions prevail, it becomes really a big barrier for us to penetrate those population groups. This is actually happening right now. Like, many parents are fearing for the health of their children, that what do they do? Do they need to give another oral polio dose? Because they have already received this. So be it in government or in private settings, communication is critical. And although we do have social media platforms, our health promotion and communication service has been very diligently providing updates, social media cards posting this. There is still no replacement for a face-to-face communication. Interpersonal communication really assures the parent, because that's the human aspect of assuring them that the vaccines are safe. You don't have to worry because your child has been given this number of dose or should you miss a dose? This is an opportunity for your child to be protected. And furthermore, I think Mr. Chair has also cited that it's not just the vaccines that will help, but likewise, ensuring a sanitary environment, the use of potable water, hand-washing practices, and of course, ensuring that children are also well-nourished. Because this, any break in hygiene, any threat in the nutritional status predisposes this infants and young children to really acquiring the infections that we want them to be protected from.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gusto ko lang po sanang marinig mula sa ating LGU partners, andito si Nago V. Vardone. Buti wala 'yung region agent sa high-risk provinces or cities for polio. Marinig po sa kanila, since they are the ones in charge of implementing the program...
ano po ba 'yung mga challenges in implementing the vaccination program and what support do you need?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, maganda po sa ating lahat. Uh, before I answer that question, uh, I'd like to present the position paper of the League of Provinces regarding Senate Bill 398 and, uh, 662, expanding the coverage of the mandatory basic immunization program. We are in full support, uh, Mr. Chair, Madam Senators, of these measures. And hopefully, this will also ensure, uh, funding support from the national government. As to the question, uh, Mr. Chairman, in the case, uh, for instance, of Eastern Samar, ang immunization coverage po namin ay 61%. Ang mga challenges po, uh, based when I was still governor, uh, siyempre 'yung delayed, uh, delivery ng mga vaccines at saka in close coordination, the logistical problem that, uh, Dr. Kalibo was mentioning is very, very evident in the rural areas. Totoo po 'yan, 'yung mga BHWs po natin, maraming mga trabaho, wala namang pong kakulang sweldo 'yung mga 'yan. Uh, malaking problema po in terms of coverage also ng mga health workers po natin, uh, problema din po talaga 'yan. Uh, meron lang po akong gustong i-bring up dito sa committee, 'yung central procurement po. Not only on, uh, vaccines but other DOHs. Ngayon pong bumalik po ako na governor, umikot po ako lahat ng hospitals. At nakakalungkot po, Mr. Chairman, Madam Senators, marami pong mga hospital equipment na napakamahal, na sacredly, uh, centrally procured by DOHs, na hindi kailangan ng mga hospital. Hindi alam kung paano gamitin. Hindi nababalik 'yung mga supplier packing stone.
Governor, let me interject. Galing po ako dun sa hospital ninyo, sa Borong, Borongan?
Opo.
Sabi ko nga, kawawa naman 'yung hospital dun at kailangan talaga, sira, sira na. Kaya sabi ko kay Secretary Dukie, unahin natin 'yung mga hospital na talagang kailangan ng, malalayong lugar. Napapabayan po talaga. Kaya kinausap ko si Secretary Dukie at gamitin natin 'yung HPEP na Pondo para mapaaayos 'yun. Ngayon, merong, uh, budget cut 'yung DOH sa HPEP dahil, uh, meron po yatang underspending. Hindi ko po naintindihan bakit nagkakaroon tayo ng underspending. Eh, ito, 'yung hospital nila sa Borongan, eh, kinakita niyo mga pasyente minsan na sa isang kama, dalawang pasyente, dalawang bata, nakahilera diyan sa, sa labas ng, uh, hospital. 'Yun talaga, kaya hindi ko talaga maintindihan. And I go ahead, Governor.
Kaya po, uh, I, I like to, uh, take this opportunity to air out some of the concerns. Alam niyo po, uh, itong issue ng, uh, immunization na vaccine, eh, malapit po sa ating puso in lahat 'yan. Pero I think there are other, uh, a lot of challenges in the health sector. Ngayon pong napag, ukulan na nung pansin ng ating pamalan, 'yung, uh, education, free teachers siya rin na po 'yan. Uh, marami, na, po tayong mga classrooms, 'yung health po talagang napapag-iwanan po ngayon. Uh, marami pong issue, eh, I don't want to, sana nga po, 'yung isa pa 'yung problema po ngayon, 'yung kawalan ng mga doctors at saka nurses sa mga hospitals. Nagiging kakompetensya po namin na mga provincial hospitals. 'Yung DOH, 'yung NDP program, ang lalaki po ng sweldo, mga 35 to 40,000 na man. Taga-lista lang, sino na sin'yo buntis, sino nagpa-checkup, et cetera. 'Yung mga nurse po sa mga hospitals, nag-aalisan sa mga hospitals, kasi 17,000 na ang sweldo, eh. Ayaw namang pong payagan ng DOH na itong mga NDP nurses magduty sa hospitals, especially when there are outbreaks. Halim mo ano, ngayon po, meron pong Dengue outbreaks, punong-puno po 'yung mga hospitals. Hindi po pinapaduty 'yung mga NDP nurses ng DOH. Eh, saan po 'yung pagtutulungan po natin na sinasabi ni, uh, Senatora Huntiveros? Bakit? Andami po talaga. That's why we are very thankful, Mr. Chairman, for this invitation. Uh, I think we will have a continuing dialogue on this. Uh, we are committed to support, uh, the national government's program on health. Uh, kaya po, maganda po at pinapakinggan po kami dahil alam po namin sa babae, ang kalagayan, uh, uh, sa issue ng help po. 'Yun na po, Mr. Chairman, maraming salamat po.
Go ahead, Senator Teresa.
Thank you, Chair. So, maitanong nga sa DOH, bakit po ganun, 'yung pong idinaing ni Gov. Evardone? Whether in times of outbreaks tulad, hindi lang sa polio tulad sa Dengue or sa, uh, ordinaryong bawat araw, no, na paano ba mas marationalize 'yung deployment ng ating health human resources? Para natutugunan 'yung health needs ng mga constituents ng ating mga, uh, local chief executives? At saka ng health system, of course?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Madam Senator, of course to our, uh, uh, Governor from Eastern Samar, uh, Governor Benny Evardone. Uh, in line with the Republic Act 11223, uh, there is a provision there that mandates the Department of Health to address, uh, the updating of the National Health Human Resource Master Plan. And I agree that health human resources has, uh, been one of the laggards in the health system strengtheningness needed by the Philippine government. Uh, health human resource, uh, is one of the critical game changer in achieving really health reform in the country. Uh, if we look at, uh, the, the current problems that we have, there's almost always a hu, health human resource contributory factor. Why it led to a break in the, uh, health system? Why there was actually, uh, a degradation of the quality of care in hospitals, et cetera? And I do agree that, uh, the current task of those, uh, in the nurse deployment programs have to be revisited and reviewed, uh, comprehensively by the Health Human Resource Development Bureau. And I think deployment programs, uh, should render as part of their, uh, expectations, uh, service components. It's not just, uh, technical support or administrative support. Similar to what other deployment programs, uh, Mr. Chair and Madam Senator and our colleagues from the local government and local chief executives, uh, like the doctors to the barrio, uh, dentist deployment, uh, midwife deployment and even some nutritionist deployment program, uh, these are service rendering, uh, deployment programs. And if it's merely just, uh, note, noting down, uh, statistics, uh, then I think there's clearly a, uh, an, uh, how would I put it? Uh, eh, a mis, mis sight or undersight on, on that. And, uh, the, the Health Human Resource Development Bureau, uh, would be the focal office, uh, in, in the Department of Health to remedy, uh, the seemingly inappropriate, uh, task necessary for the.
Doctor Kalino, 'yung HHR Bureau po ba may timetable na sila for revisiting 'yung tasks ng NDP nurses? At para makapagfeedback hindi lang sa committee namin, pati kinagov Evardone or kaya 'yung buong League of Provinces nila?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chair and Madam Senator, uh, we will be requesting our colleagues from the Health Human Resource Development Bureau. I think, uh, when the Republic Act 11223 was passed, apart from the implementing rules and regulation, uh, the parallel development of the Health Human Resource Master Plan was also taken up already, uh, by the HHRDB. Uh, in fact, uh, this might be a version 3.0 of a Health Human Resource Master Plan because, uh, Director Kenneth Rongkilio was one of the proponents of a Health Human Master Plan as early as 2007. So, uh, the question is, how, how was this master plan really executed? And how was this master plan seen as an agent of health reform in terms of providing quality of care, in terms of ensuring that the necessary services needed by our population should have addressed this, no? Uh, unfortunately, Mr. Chair and Madam Senator, I'm not privy to the technical details of this master plan. Uh, but maybe, uh, through a small briefing, uh, with the community, committee secretariat and of course, uh, legislative staff, uh, the representatives from the Health Human Resource Development Bureau may provide a comprehensive, uh, uh, detail on how, what it is, what's currently the status and how we'll now address the, the, uh, concerns and issues of our local chief executives.
Thank you, Doctor Kalibo. Para rin maka posible, Mr. Chair, na within the year, mabigyan ng concrete response. At least itong isang concern, uh, para step by step, diba? Inaayos po natin 'yung, uh, responsiveness ng public health system natin, whether sa outbreaks or sa every ordinary day.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, go ahead, Governor.
Uh, thank you very much po for, uh, mentioning this issue on, uh, talagang NDP program. Hindi po talaga namin maintindihan ng mga gubernador. Ngayon, ano tayo, may Dengue outbreak tayo. We have declared a national calamity. And yet, we cannot mobilize the nurses employed by DOHs. Kasi sabi nila, hindi raw po trained sa hospitals. Pero may mga nurses na, na deployed dun sa NDP, na mga dating na sa hospitals na, eh, bakit hindi yun ang ipagamit sa amin? Wala kami mga nurse, eh, wala ma. It's not only the case in Eastern Samar, it's a national, uh, concern. We just, uh, concluded the National Assembly of Governors and we have the same concern, common concern. Na talagang wala kami mga doctors, nurses, nandun sa DOHs. Kaya sana nga po, hindi lang review, sana nga po, kung mapagutusan ng ating butihing secretary na ipagamit na ito mga, na, nurses ng DOHs dito. Andaming, punong-puno 'yung mga hospitals ngayon ng Dengue. Uh, and yet, iyon po, thank, uh, maraming salamat po again, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Madam Senators, for this opportunity. I hope that the national government will act on this decisively, uh, as soon as possible. Thank you po.
Thank you, Governor. Uh, let us, uh, move forward and, uh, discuss the proposed, uh, one more, uh, go ahead, Senator.
Salamat, Chair. Actually, several questions, pero buin ko nalang at least for the record para lang makasagot ang DOH sa committee, kahit in writing nalang po after this hearing. Uh, I wanted to ask, kung will there be a nationwide mobilization to vaccinate children with the polio vaccine? Tapos, uh, pangalawa po, uh, dahil nga, dahil ni sinabi ni Sen. Nancy, si Chair din naman ang magsosponsor ng DOH budget. Uh, could you update the committee, kahit nga po in writing, could you update us on the status of the vaccine procurement for 2019? I think 'yung budget po ninyo mga 7.5 billion pesos, how much of that has been obligated? How many of the vaccines under your work and financial plan have been procured and delivered to the LGUs? And, uh, vaccine procurement has been pretty much stable for the past three to four years. Uh, you're procuring more or less the same amount of vaccines every year. Has the DOH tried to use the multi-year obligations for vaccine procurement sa budget process? Why or why not? And lastly po, um, for the record, meron din mga proposals to in, uh, to include banning non-vaccinated kids from entering the public elementary, elementary school system. Ano po 'yung take niyo dito? Kasi meron din pong mga nagre-raise, for example, ng human rights concern. So, public health and human rights, paano niyo po tinitignan? What other radical proposals can we explore to ensure higher vaccination coverage rates? So, yun po, Mr. Chair, for the record, sana, para kung pwedeng masagot ng DOH sa committee, kahit na if in writing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, go ahead. You have any question?
Maraming po salamat. Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Chairman. Uh, from the Philippine Coalition of, uh, Consumer Welfare. Uh, actually, we have identified already the challenges right now. And what we need is, the things needs to be done. I think we have to maximize available resources that is cost-effective and address this present situation. While the DOH, uh, we're talking about this topic, it's like the field health in the last meeting. I think we have to, uh, effectively, uh, use media again. Because I think what is crucial sa sinabi, Doctor Kaliba, was new communication, communication with regards to this. In fact, national na itong problema, eh. Our Dengue, in my, my data, is about 1,107, ang namamatay na. And in July, hindi naman hurimasang presidente dahil sinabihan na niya. And even, I was happy about the proactive stance of Senator Go, na sinabi niya, tignan niya. Tinignan, pinatignan ho ni presidente ito ng July, okay? And hindi ko alam, uh, kung ano na nangyari about it. While we are talking about possible budget, na siguro long-term pa 'yan, ano 'yung magagawa natin? Miss Kyo tayo dito ngayon, so paglabas natin, pwede natin sabihan ang ating mga magulang, papatid, na papakunahan na. Okay, uh, thanks for Governor Evardone, na sabi niya 'yung mga site ng problema ng nurses, ano, sa gobyerno. There are some NGOs, Rotary, Red Cross, Alliance, na willing sila tumulong, na imobilize 'yan. Kasi from regional, provincial, municipality, sir, meron akong talagang media officer and help services na umahab sa mga ito. And kailangan kong gawin lang talaga is, uh, mag-isi serioso ang DILG, DEFED, DOH, and TSWD. Informan na ho lahat na hindi na itubiro, eh. Kasi, oh, meron akong pamangkin na polio, eh. Hanggang ngayon, inaalagaan namin, nakabaluktot 'yung paa. Nineteen years, hindi po natin ito nakikita, eh, nag-outbreak naman ngayon. And, uh, so happy that Senator Bongo is here, who handles the, the health. Kaya for sure, 'yung sinabi niya, ganun na rin 'yung sinabi na ni presidente. July po, I think, was it July, na sinabi ni President Duterte na look on this matter, okay? So, yun po, and, uh, mura ho 'yun, wala ho actually gastos. Sasabihan niyo lang ang gobyerno, 'yung, uh, radio ng bayan, PTB4. Now, big gun network like ABS, GMA, CNN, they have this public, uh, service program. We can even utilize it. So, kung magtutuluan lang, eh, mahirap po, eh. Ano ba pwedeng gawin natin? Kasi 'yung experience ako, eh, ang mga wawa ko dun sa mga tao. I also heard the Philippine Pediatric Society na wala silang oral, but meron 'yung five-in-one. But in all honesty, I have so many friends because I was in industry for the past 15 years. I used to be the chair of marketing of a largest pharmaceutical. Magkasama ho tayo dun sa Muranggamot, ma'am. Magkasama tayo, ma'am, sa pagnaaksidente, wala na dapat i-deposito. Napakaganda mo nun, di ko sa hospital. Hindi ko alam na iba kahit dali mo sa St. Luke's, eh. Tine-takeover, in fact, ng PCSO, eh, yun. So, nakiki-usap po ako, dahil po lagi na rin din ko additional funding. Well, it's true, we need stopping on this, but meron hom resources ang gobyerno. Tawagan din ho natin 'yung mga ibang NGO. We have the League of Corporate Foundations, mga big gun corporation, Doctor Kwan agrees with me. They can mobilize, even the Red Cross. Kasi po, July pa, parang kinonbin na ni Secretary Dukie, ang national disaster. Bakit mo ba ikonbin 'yan? Kung hindi talaga nandun at nakikita nila ang problema. We have missiles, and we have already deep theorya. Imagine may deep theorya na tayo ngayon sa Norte, sa, uh, I, I check it with the doctor here. Kaya po, ngayon, ini-encourage ko po ang lahat. Miss Kyo po 'yun nandito, paglabas natin, tulungan natin ang, ang gobyerno, lalo na 'yung panawagan ni Senator Bongo. Na, we restore back the confidence of our parents' guardian in vaccination. Ilang po, marami po salamat, Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Chairman Ricardo Samaniego of the Philippine Coalition of Consumer Welfare. We will take, uh, into consideration your comments. Uh, we have to move on to other bills.
Chair, pwede isang last na lang for sa immunization. Kasi kanina pa nababanggit 'yung Dengvaxia and, uh, 'yung problema natin sa Dengue. I wonder kung si, na Doctor Gutsalenba, as president of the Philippine Pediatric Society, what is your stand with regards to the Dengvaxia vaccine?
Should we make it available? Ah, alam naman ho natin, in other countries like Singapore, it is being offered. And ang nakikita ko lang ho eh, parang, well, 'yung who can afford, they can always fly to Singapore and have their kids vaccinated. So nakikita naman ho natin, parang 'yung magkakaroon na naman ng, parang gap between who can afford and who cannot afford when it comes dun sa access, access sila sa Deng vaxia vaccine.
Thank you very much for the difficult question. Uh, ma'am, actually, um, the advantage in the private sector is, like for private pediatricians or even private other doctors for that matter is, we have the luxury of time. Now we know that the Deng vaccine is indicated for those who have had Deng, yun na yun lumabas. So the clamor now is, if the vaccine can be made available, para ang sinasabi po nila is, hindi naman sa public se- hindi naman sa ilagay sa program, but at least for the public, for the private sector. Because now we know that who these patients are na na Deng na, so sila pwedeng bigyan ng bakuna. So that, ang importante po kasi is the communication of the risk of the vaccine, the advantages of the vaccine, so that an informed decision can actually be made and that the administration of the vaccine becomes an informed choice.
In fact, siguro, just to share, when, nung bagong labas palang itong Deng vaxia na to, I consulted my pediatrician and asked him kung dapat ka na bang bigyan 'yung mga anak ko? And he said, "This is a fairly new, uh, vaccine." Antayin muna natin kasi may lalabas pa dun sa clinical trial neto, so hindi niya nirecommend. But, um, since may mga bagong lumabas na nga, in fact, my eldest son already, uh, was- nagkaroon na siya ng Deng a few years ago, so technically, pwede na siyang mabigyan ng, ng ganitong vaccine, but it's, it's not available here. So, siguro, Mr. Chair, baka it's for another hearing, um, at saka medyo parang, siguro nga yan, 'yung, 'yung- hysteria over the vaccine has already died down and we can rationally talk dun sa effect- effectiveness ng ganitong Deng vaxia vaccine. Baka, we can conduct another, another hearing when it comes to this vaccine. Kasi, um, hindi, pwede naman hindi siya, I think ang pagkakamali dun sa Deng vaxia vaccine, binigay na siya kaagad sa mass, naging, naging ano eh, mass, mass vaccination without really knowing yet kung ano 'yung itong vaccine na to. But since, uh, maraming bansana ang gumagamit na ito, baka it's high time na pag-aralan natin and introduce it. Pero, we will not use, uh, government funds or very limited lang 'yung paggamit ng bakunang ito. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Meron pong, uh, Senator Nancy, merong schedule tayo sa Blue Ribbon, antay ko lang po si Chairman, uh, Senator Gordon. Yung about sa Deng vaxia. And then, uh, let me recognize, uh, Senator-
Sir, suggestion lang, baka 'yung pag-discuss ng Deng vaxia, I don't know, I will, uh, uh, adhere to your wisdom. Baka kasi pag-Blue Ribbon 'yung magde-discuss nung Deng vaxia. Babalik na naman tayo dun sa issue of corruption, issue dun sa problema dun sa, uh, vaccine and not really talk about kung ano 'yung magagawa ng Deng vaxia in light of our problem with Deng eh.
Meron pong, uh, resolution si Senator Ribilia urging the Committee on Health and Democracy or the appropriate Senate Committee to conduct an inquiry in aid of legislation on call of a group of doctors, scientists, and health professionals to lift the ban on Deng vaxia vaccine to allow its limited private use. Anyway, uh, pag-usapan po namin ni Senator, uh, Gordon po ito. And let me acknowledge si Senator Bato, uh, The Rock, The La Rosa. Uh, 'yung speaking of, uh, itong mga vaccine, immunization, meron na bang naka- sa mga expert, sino'ng expert dito sa, sa, ano, sa mga vaccine, vaccine? Hi, ma'am, medyo ala lang tong tanong ko ah, meron ba kayong nadiskover, meron bang binibenta na vaccine na isasaksak sa mga drug lord na, 'yung hindi na sila, 'yung pagnakatulog sila ng mahimbing tas hindi na sila magising? Meron bang ganan?
Sir, parang it's not working in the immune response, right? Because vaccines should be working on the immune response, so I don't think the response-
Kasi meron pong nadiskover si, si Bato, uh, sabihin mo na lang kung saan po tayo makaka-acquire niya. Anyway, uh, let us, uh, move forward and discuss the proposed bills. Okay, go, uh, meron na kayo na, meron-
Uh, we're, sorry, I'm from the National Institutes of Health of the University of the Philippines. And we've been supporting the DOH actually in the immunization programs. And I fully agree with, um, with the programs that so far the DOH has, uh, has promoted. However, there are of course deficiencies along the way. Um, of cour- we should, number one, I, I just wrote down here like five words. So one is communicating the value of vaccines, that's very important. Two, maintaining cold chain, that should be consistent from the upper level down to the municipal level. Third, we need human resources. There's only like two and a half people in the EPI compared to forty people in EPI in Vietnam, in Cambodia, and Laos. Um, there, and vaccination, only, it's not just vaccines, it's also surveillance. So actually, I don't know what happened. Uh, maybe part is that our surveillance has been a little bit lax on, uh, polio. So that's why, you know, all of a sudden, we have two cases. Um, we do have now started environmental surveillance. Um, uh, fifth is the stockouts. We should be preventing stockouts. Our procurement system goes from local procurement to UNICEF procurement. Um, and then lastly, of course, we're here for technical support and we, as I said, we, we support the, the establishment of export panels in introducing new vaccines. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Senator.
Quick follow-up lang dun kay Dr. Lopez. Baka kaya, uh, dahil there are these five or six, uh, elements na kailangan natin sa mas strategic and proactive response sa ganitong mga sitwasyon and to prevent them recurring, baka sa ilalim din nung pagsponsor niyo nung DOH budget, pwede nating i-revisit 'yung proposal ng DOH for the creation of an immunization unit, also to pick up these lessons and, uh, implement them, 'yung sinabi ni Dr. Lopez. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, may I just-
Uh, go ahead, Dr. Roselia Carlos.
I'm the director of the RITM, Research Institute for Tropical Medicine. And we, we, we conduct the laboratory-based surveillance of the vaccine-preventable diseases, which includes polio. And just to give you the short story of how this outbreak was declared. Uh, when, when, uh, the surveillance response from the hospitals were not as good, my staff of the National Polio Reference Lab decided to conduct the environmental surveillance nationwide. That, that was collection of samples from sewer systems, from rivers. Uh, because as we know, polio is excreted, uh, via the fecal route. So, the important event happened in August when they first detected the poliovirus in, from the sewers of Tondo in Manila. And subsequently, there were others in Davao, uh, which were type two. And, uh, last, uh, after that, there was this isolation of a virus from a stool of the patient in Lanau. And, uh, what we did was to, uh, send this, we identified it as a vaccine-derived poliovirus, sent to the WHO Reference Lab for confirmation and confirmed as such. And the, the genetic sequence of the Davao and the Lanau patients were almost identical. And that, uh, proves that there is circulating, uh, vaccine-derived polio in the environment, even if the patient was from Lanau and the environmental sample came from Davao. So, we have a feeling that there may be other areas where there is circulation and that was again proven by the Laguna patient who had also vaccine-derived polio too. And these were all genetically linked, meaning, uh, similar genetic composition. And that this dramatizes the importance of surveillance in, uh, vaccine or immunization programs. This, the surveillance should start before a vaccine is introduced as baseline and then a follow-through as the, the immunization program is being implemented so that we know if cases are being, uh, controlled or whether cases are reemerging, such as what happened in this particular, uh, case of polio outbreak. So the tie-up there, it was declared as an outbreak because there was a patient and, uh, the samples, uh, were genetically linked to environmental samples from another area. So, that, that's the story.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Senator Nancy.
Nasa budget niyo 'yung surveillance, it's part of your mandate?
Uh, it's a lab surveillance po, separate, called the National Reference Lab Budget.
And is your budget sufficient?
Unfortunately, it was cut by eighty million.
Huh?
For twenty-twenty, despite all-
It was cut by eighty million?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, kinat sila ng eighty million? Sila nga naka-discover na we have this problem with polio. I, I know this is not a budget hearing, but since you're also the one defending the budget, baka, uh, ako nga, if you need more, if you need more than eighty million, I think hahanapan namin together with my fellow senators. Baka there's a need for more envi- environmental surveillance. Baka may mga iba pa tayong vaccine-preventable diseases na madidiskover niyo through your surveillance.
So we, we have in fact expanded the environmental surveillance, especially in areas where there were patients. And we hope we can identify more so that the program can, can do their supplemental immunization, uh, activities.
Sa polio lang ho to, but 'yung for others?
We have others, so we have for many diseases, rotavirus, even the other proposed vaccines for- in the bills to be discussed today, we have ongoing surveillance, but on a limited scale because of, uh, you know, financial constraints. So we hope we get better support.
Di, but kasi 'yung nakakain ng eighty million, how much did you ask for? Pardon ma'am, makana 'yung hinigin niyo for this program?
Uh, last year, it was one ninety-eight million and we were told that in the NEP for twenty-twenty, it's hundred eighteen, one one-
It was, di, previous, uh, for this year, hundred ninety-eight million. Pero sa budget call niyo, how much did you ask for?
Uh, we were told it was one-one-eight.
No, 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 'yung nagre-request kayo, how much?
Well, at least the same or more.
Eh, how much is more?
Perhaps, eh, another fifty for a better-
Sa mga one-thirty, you need one, one hundred-
Because these agents po are very expensive and-
Di, kasi nakakain ng eighty, but you need, uh, another thirty, fifty.
Yeah, yes ma'am.
So mga hundred thirty, 'yung kailangan namin hanapan kung saan, para mabigay sa inyo.
Opo. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You will study the proposal of, uh, additional, uh, budget? No more questions? Let us, uh, okay, go ahead, uh, Doctor Su Sardino of, uh, PHA-
Philippine Hospital. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I represent the Philippine Hospital Association. And we have a lot of, of local government hospital members also. And one of the problems being raised to us by local government hospitals is of, are of course the value, number one, poor, uh, infrastructure, especially among local government hospitals, lack of manpower stated by the good governor. And third, of course, the technology also in these various hospitals. And it is good that the Department of Health has came out with the program, the Health Facility Enhancement, which has actually helped a lot also local government hospitals. But one of the main problems is actually lack of manpower. And it is true that even local government hospitals, we do lack a lot of nurses. Me, we just suggest, we're, Chair, if, uh, with the indulgence of the Department of Health, if it is possible to change the policy direction. Instead of, let us say, deploying nurses to barangay and municipalities, just recording, let us say, diseases, why not deploy them, for example, in hospitals? Because you know, you have to admit that hospitals are actually also centers. It can influence the health delivery system in that certain locality. So it's just a matter of changing a policy direction by deploying, deployment, deploying hos- uh, nurses in local government hospitals. You have to realize that, you know, in local government hospitals, the resource is actually very scarce. Because you know, you have to allocate it in various competing needs. And in local government, you know, money for health is actually very meager. So, if you can ask the department to, to do some change in the policy statement, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Doctor Es- go ahead, Mr. Chris Munios of Philippine Alliance of Patients Organization, Apo.
Good afternoon, Chair and Senators. Um, I would just like to, um, maybe we could also, uh, expand the coverage because in the Republic Act 10152 Mandatory Infants and Children Health Immunization Act of 2011, it stays there that the mandatory includes basic immunization for children under five. But, um, I was also part of the organization of Yellow War Society, that we advocate for hepatitis B. So, through experience, let's say, if the child misses immunization, let's say mga one year na na skip, so when we say, okay, you go back to the health center, kasi sa, the way we interpret it is children under five years old. Pero when they skip the one-year-old or two-years-old, they were told that they cannot avail it because na skip mo na yun twenty-four hours. Kasi the, the normal routine is, you should be vaccinated after birth. So, for example, it's one way, because we see naman na, diba, sabi nga ng DOH, when the, it's not only the polio vaccine that is a problem. It means that 'yung ibang disease din, kung may negative impact dun, sigurado, damay 'yung iba. And, siyempre, yun ninety-five percent, we see that pa downward na. So, we see children that is, have hepatitis B, um, below five years old. So sana we can consider na it will be a policy for DOH na, pag within five years old, pag bumali sila sa center because they skip the vaccine, that they will be allowed. And I think it has to be strengthened in the law also, kasi it's one way of doing catch-up immunization. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chris Munios. Uh, wala na pong ibang masasalita. Itong Philippine Mortuary Association, hindi na- As a next, uh, bill, kasi kala ko po, related 'yung, related 'yung ano, 'yung, 'yung, uh, poison dun sa Mortuary Association. Ta tinatanong ni Senator Bato kanina, bakit raw nandidito 'yung Philippine Mortuary Association? Meron ka tanong sa kanila? Mamaya pa para saan tayong hospital? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, if you will allow me, before you leave the issue on the vaccination, um, sir, we would just like to state that the Philippine Pediatric Society, together with the Pediatric Infectious Disease Society of the Philippines, actually support the inclusion of the vaccines that you actually incorporated in your bills. But we also suggest, sir, the creation or establishment of a national immunization technical advisory group or the NITAC, which is an independent body from the Department of Health. We believe that this will actually alleviate fears of people that the decision-making is only with one person. And then third, sir, um, you, in your bill, sir, you, you did not include a joint committee meeting to be able to, uh, to determine which vaccines need to be included in the immunization program. We believe that it should be the Department of Health guided by this independent technical advisory group composed of academics, scientists, clinical epidemiologists, et cetera. And then, sir, we also like to support the Department of Health's, uh, call for additional resources. Kasi say, that's really their problem. Can you imagine one individual taking care of like ten, twelve programs? And sometimes in the far-flung areas, they can only have vaccination once a day. So, sir, kasi iisa lang 'yung tao nila. And then, sir, I would also like to reiterate the surveillance because as you have seen, surveillance indeed is very important for vaccine-preventable diseases. And I would just like to follow up the budget cut of the Research Institute for Tropical Medicine. Kasi, sir, kundi, masisira, we will have emergence of all the diseases if we don't have a surveillance that is in place. Thank you very much, ma'am.
We will, uh, take into consideration and we will study the proposal, proposal of your additional, uh, budget. And, uh, you said that Chiberry of DILG is also recognized?
With, with your permission, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, DILG from, uh-
Yes, I would want again to reiterate if whether or not the DOH stand on, uh, the concern of, uh, depre- uh, dilapidated, uh, province, provincial hospitals and, uh, the call for the leak of provinces also of either turning it over to the DOH, uh, custody or the management at least of all, uh, public hospital. This is in concern with, I think, when I attended the hearing, this is, this was- This is in concern with, I think, when I attended the hearing, this is, this was raised during the time of Governor Guen Garcia, before Congressman, now Governor. That, yes, I know, that, um, there are a lot of public hospitals which are not properly managed by the local governments. And this is a present concern because, uh, because since it changes, administration changes, the, at times they don't maintain the same sets of people there. They tend to change it again, so the policy changes also, the competence of the hospital changes also.
Po-politika, you mean?
Yes, na po-politika, so from level three, nagiging level one. So what, I think what DOH is seeking is how to maintain the quality of health in all provincial hospital and city hospital run by the local government. My only question, Senators, um, on the part of the ILG, are we to lay a son again on the turning it over again to DOH or are we to maintain it still to the local government? Because at present, it's not being maintained well or managed well by some, not all, by some, not all. And, um, if that is the case, then, um, I, I would seek the guidance of this committee.
Chair, Mister Chair?
Go ahead Senator.
Hindi ho pa dahil under dun sa local government ko, technically, health is already a devolved function. Uh, ba't yung nga yung common complaint na LGU, diba? Nasa kanila yung trabaho na sa DOH yung pera. So I think the, the dilemma is, uh, that, I mean, the funding is there, kaya kayo nagpo-procure ng vaccines, when technically trabaho naman talaga nila yun, kaso lang wala sa kanila yung pera, so I think nagiging chicken and egg yung situation, Mister Chair.
May naman sa DILG, uh, kay Governor, kung may mga reklamo naman po yung mga mamaya natin, sabi niyo pinapabayaan yung hospital, panibago administrasyon, dyan po papasok ang DILG, pwede naman sila magfile ng gross, uh, neglect of duty, at pwede pong ma-suspend eh ang mga local officials, pag pinabayaan nila, lalong-lalo na po yung mga hospital sa kanilang probinsya o sa kanilang mga munisipyo at syudad. Anyway, let us now move forward and discuss the proposed bills on immunization. May we know the position of the DOH and our experts?
Thank you Mister Chair and good afternoon again everyone to, uh, the senators of the committee, our colleagues from the other societies and civil soc- uh, civil society and professional organizations. The Department of Health strongly supports the aforementioned bills, Senate Bill three nine eight and Senate Bill, uh, six six two, uh, which seeks to expand the coverage of the DOH immunization program to protect infants and young children from life-threatening infectious diseases. The DOH established the national immunization program known then as Expanded Program of Immunization in nineteen seventy-six to grant infants and children easy access to immunization against the six most prevalent vaccine preventable diseases during that time, namely tuberculosis, uh, polyomylitis, deferia, tetanus pertussis, and measles. Fourteen years after its establishment, uh, the DOH achieved a seventy to eighty percent coverage rate of children fully immunized through the EPI. Uh, the DOH believes that the timely research on emerging diseases is necessary to ensure the safety of Filipinos. As such, the effectiveness of these vaccines for diseases proposed to be covered by the national immunization program should be supported by reliable evidence. Uh, in fact, according to the World Health Organization, uh, immunization is an effective practice to control and eliminate the spread of infectious and life-threatening diseases. It prevents between two to three million deaths each year. The health investment is considered as one of the most cost-effective strategies that could be made accessible to vulnerable and difficult-to-reach areas. Hence, the department values a timely proposal of these measures, which in return would help expand the coverage of immunization program to the public. The DOH respectfully submits the following recommendation as well. So apart from mainly identifying vaccines to become mandatory, we also recommend that a technical assistance package be likewise formalized to ensure that the capacities of local governments to effectively, uh, implement, uh, the delivery of vaccine services to its population, uh, be reali- realizable. So this is what we have discussed earlier on, that, uh, it's not just having the vaccines in your supply, but also knowing, uh, how to effectively use them and making sure that these are utilized, uh, hundred percent by those who are in need of this. Those also include the provision to provide additional human resources to implement the immunization programs. And likewise, upgrade the number of DOH assigned personnel, uh, to an immunization unit, which requires of at least six more additional staff in the central office and at least five additional staff in the regional offices. Uh, we will likewise review, uh, Mister Chair and Madam Sen- uh, Mister and Madam Senators, uh, previous position statements that were submitted in the previous Congress, of which, uh, it identified the restriction of the Health Secretary in terms of, uh, approving the set of vaccines concerned. And likewise provisions on the FEC and NIC as well, in line with the Republic Act, uh, eleven two two three or the Universal Healthcare Act. Uh, this looks into as well the value of an independent expert panel, uh, being recommended, uh, by expert groups such as the NITAG, which, uh, conforms with the recommendation of WHO. So I think, uh, what we can probably improve on is how this, uh, expert bodies, be it under DOH such as the FEC or the NIC, uh, and of course the HTA Council, which is according to RA eleven two two three, and of course, uh, independent expert groups such as the NITAG, would be in consonance, uh, achieving its goal of really making sure that the Philippine government's procurement and, uh, recommendation on what vaccines to use will be likewise be really based on evidence and, uh, will be of benefit to Filipino children and the entire population. Uh, this will be, uh, formalized, uh, Mister Chair and Madam Senators, Mister Senator, to be signed officially by our secretary.
Thank you.
Mister Chair?
Go ahead Senator Isa.
Mister Chair, um, one question lang po, what companies manufacture the vaccines for proposed inclusion in the program? Sa pagkalam po ng DOH, yung pong Rota, PCV, JEV, at saka HPV vaccines?
Mister Chair and Madam Senator, Mister Senator, the, there are commercial products available, but there might also be internationally procured vaccines that have, uh, achieved WHO pre-qualification status. So, uh, this will, uh, procuring them, uh, will depend on how would be the best, uh, win for the government in terms of economic, uh, cost savings as well, uh, and of course economies of scale, so to speak. But currently, rotavirus has two companies available here. Uh, one is by, uh, GlaxosmithKline, uh, which manufactures Rotarix. And the other one by Merck, Sharp &amp; Dome, uh, which manufactures the Rotatek. Uh, this is as far as Rotarix, uh, vaccines are concerned. For Japanese encephalitis, uh, the Philippines used a, uh, a company from China. Uh, I forgot the brand, but Chengdu, uh, Chengdu. And this has, this is used differently, uh, as compared to the private, uh, vaccine uh, from Sanofi Pasteur, uh, which is the Imojev. What's the other vaccine? For the pneumococcal conjugate vaccine, uh, which has been identified among, uh, the vaccines to be part of the mandatory, uh, basic immunization. There are two types in the market, uh, one, for children, uh, which, one is the pneumococcal conjugate vaile- uh, pneumococcal conjugate vaccine thirteen valent, which is Prevenar, which is from Pfizer. And, uh, pneumococcal conjugate vaccine ten valent, uh, uh, with nantypaboll hemophilus influenzae or PCV ten NTHI, uh, Synphorex, uh, which is from the company also of GlaxosmithKline. Thank you, uh, Mister Chair and Madam Senator.
Go ahead.
Mister Chair, out of the four, um, vaccines, meron na ba dito ina-administer ang DOH?
Mister Chair and Madam Senator, originally, the rotavirus was once part of the routine immunization. Uh, but I believe it, it was temporarily halted, uh, because there was an impact assessment done uh, as a technical assistance of the NIH to the Department of Health. But I'm unaware of the results of that.
When was this?
We conducted the impact assessment in twenty fourteen to twenty sixteen. Uh, the results are actually good, um, we submitted our results. It's actually, uh, um, and we worked with the WHO and the DOH to conduct this study. And we submitted our findings to the DOH.
Mister Chair?
The other one, Mister Chair, uh, and Madam Senator, the PCV thirteen, uh, has actually been implemented in fourteen out of seventeen regions. Uh, I think, uh, due to budgetary cost, uh, it, it is, it was unable to, uh, implement it nationally. So, but through some savings in the, uh, twenty nineteen budget, I think we recommended to make use of the, uh, budget available to at least cover the remaining regions that were not part of the fourteen, uh, regional, uh, regions of the country. Uh, this is PCV thirteen, uh, Mister Chair and Madam Senator.
Sa Japanese encephalitis?
The Japanese, uh, encephalitis Chengdu vaccine, uh, Madam Chair, is WHO, uh, pre-qualified and it must made through UNICEF, uh, it is not available locally.
So hindi sa DOH budget?
Uh, it's DOH budget, but it's through UNICEF procurement, uh, international procurement, uh, Mister Chair and Madam Senator.
So nag- uh, mabacinate na rin tayo for Japanese encephalitis?
Uh, we, we had a selected, uh, immunization for Japanese encephalitis, regions one, two, three, and Cordillera. It happened from April to May, uh, twenty nineteen.
And for HPV?
HPV, uh, Madam Chair, uh, Mister Chair and Madam Senator, has been, uh, implemented since, I think, twenty fifteen. Uh, it's, I think, the quadrivalent, uh, human papilloma virus vaccine. Uh, the brand, I think, is Gardasil by Merck, Sharp &amp; Dome. But I'm not sure of the newer product development, which is a nine-valent, uh, HPV vaccine. But the one that we have been procuring and, uh, implementing for teenagers as part of school-based immunization is was only the quadrivalent vaccine.
And ano, ilang quantity utok for HPV?
We are using a two-dose regimen, uh, six months apart. But in terms of the numbers, uh, Mister Chair and Madam Senator, uh, we will submit the quantities, uh, through the committee secretary.
So, uh, Doctor Kalibo, technically, even if you don't have, uh, a law that would expand immunization, DOH is already doing it, thank you. So kung, um, if you can find any additional budget, pwede pang lakihan niyo yung scope niyo for this, for, uh, vaccines?
Uh, Mister Chair and Madam Senator, I think if, if the law, uh, comes in, the rotavirus will find its way back. Uh, that will be the benefit, benefit once this law has been amended. Uh, because currently, we are prevented from putting it because, uh, due to budgetary concerns. But should there be, uh, uh, that amendment to the law, we have to realign and, uh, recompute, uh, for the number of rotavirus vaccine that will be needed, uh, for vulnerable, uh, population groups. And this is also started as early as six weeks, uh, as early as six weeks during infancy.
Actually, Doctor Kalibo, even if you don't have this law, kung makakahanap kami ng funding for rotavirus, you can already implement this next year?
Yes, I agree Mister Chair and Madam Senator.
Tama, sige, maybe you can submit it to the chair? Yung, um, siguro kahit limited lang for rotavirus.
Kindly submit it to, to the committee.
Mister Chair?
Go ahead Senator Isa.
Mister Chair, regarding po sa vaccine sufficiency ulit, uh, where are we now in terms of producing our own vaccines? Kasi meron pong program dati, di po ba, ano pong nangyari doon?
Uh, without, uh, Mister Chair and Madam Senator, uh, our colleague from our ITM, uh, would be the best to handle this because during the time of Director Olveda, I think there were efforts to do, uh, uh, locally-produced vaccine.
Mister Chair, siguro just to share up, when we had that parliamentary visit in UK, isa ito dun sa sina-suggest ng, uh, ano yon, na pwede no, it's an industry that we can capture dito sa Philippines. Kasi di ba, I think they test a vaccine sa pigs and dun sa mga since tayo lang yung hindi Muslim country, kaya pwedeng mag-set up ata ng, uh, uh, production for vaccination dito sa Philippines. I mean, just to share. Chair, si Doctor Carlos lang po makasasabog.
Go ahead, uh, Doctora Celia Carlos.
We have a division called Biological Manufacturing Division in our ITM. And many, many years ago, um, ma'am? Medyo nakaproblem po. Uh, many years ago, we were in fact exporting the old type of vaccines, yes, uh, to the region. However, uh, when we were, our area was procured by a private developer, that vaccine facility was knocked down. Opo, parang naging mold. So we lost that vaccine facility. And, uh, now we are limited to this three hectare compound with, uh, we lack in fact, uh, an area to reconstruct, uh, the vaccine facility.
Uh, so that's one- Have you never requested Congress for budget para i-reconstruct yung facility kung may capacity naman na tayo?
Former Director Olveda, uh, requested for about two hundred million for a BCG facility. However, uh, there were problems in the production process after that was established. And, uh, unfortunately, the technology for BCG production has, uh, you know, uh, changed from that time on. And, uh, we are, we are no longer able to catch up with the technology change because the people who were running the facility were those who were running the old, uh, vaccine facility and had no more chance to, you know, uh, get updated training on newer technology. So that's one of our problems. We request for training overseas so that our, our personal skills may be updated with respect to vaccine production technology. But the GAA, uh, I am told, does not allow, uh, that GAA funds be used for training of staff. So we have that, uh, we have been having that persistent problem. Uh, second problem is, um, uh, the, uh, the, the solution to the problem. So what we are doing now, uh, we submitted a vaccine self-reliance proposal to, uh, the, uh, DOH Public Private Partnership Program. And, uh, we were, uh, proposing for a, a pre-feasibility study, uh, specifically a grant from the Asian Development Bank on how we can be advised on the proper direction that we should take for the Philippines to regain its vaccine production capability. So now that grant is approved by ADB and we are, uh, the feasibility study is ongoing. So we were told, uh, the results will come in a few months. And based on the results, uh, we will determine what next steps to take, uh, with respect to that, uh, plan. But hopefully, the results will be favorable because that will determine whether, uh, the proposal is financially feasible, socially acceptable, and all the other factors considered.
And if the feasibility study results are positive, Doctor Carlos, sana i-advice niyo po through DOH, yung aming komite, para kung it's all systems go given certain conditions, baka pwede kayo mag-propose sa amin what the DOH budget should look like, if not for year twenty twenty, for year twenty twenty-one, para simulan muli yung dati namang may capacity na tayo dito sa Pilipinas.
We will do that.
Thank you. Thank you Mister Chair.
Thank you. Ay, pabor ka? Wala? Ako te, uh, Senator Batu, Yola Rosa.
Mister Chair, thank you. Hindi ito related sa budget din yun ma'am, pero pala manunod ka, nanunod ka sa kulas sini. Tatanong ko lang sa inyo, mga pwede ba yung mga lumalaba sa sini na yung mga producer ng vaccines, sila rin yung nagkikreate ng, ng, uh, ng, uh, outbreak para mabinta yung kanilang vaccine? Ako, wala ba, nanunod lang ko na sini, pwede kaya mangyari yan? Pwede ba?
Pasagot, si, pasagot mo, kaya dito lapit mamaya, ikaw ramon. Go ahead, uh, Doctora Isa.
Uh, of course, anything is possible. In fact, uh, we have been participating in what you call programs to address biosafety and biological threats and biological hazards. And this is in, in collaboration with other agencies abroad who have the same, uh, programs. And in fact, our ITM is listed-
And in fact, our ITM is listed as one of the watchable agencies in the Philippines because we store a lot of microorganisms and a lot of our staff are technically capable of, you know, doing untoward things. So we do a background investigation of our staff. We have more than 50, what's this, cameras? CCTV cameras in different areas of the facility just to make sure that our staff are watched over 24 hours. And we have a very strict access control system into the certain areas of the facility.
Thank you. Basta kami, ma'am, full support po kami sa, sa inyong lahat. Basta sa kapakanan po ng bawat Pilipino.
Go ahead, ma'am. Last lang hindi kasi nabanggit 'yung biosecurity. Meron ba kayo equipment na 'yung, kasi di ba sa sine, sinimulan na ni Senator Bato 'yung sine, 'yung may retina recognition or 'yung fingerprint identification? May ganung gamit ba 'yung our ITM?
Fingerprint pa lang po kami.
Wala pa kayo mga...
Wala pa po 'yung retina.
But eventually, you plan to procure because nabanggit niyo ako.
Masyadong mahal.
Kasi nabanggit niyo, parang may mga nakakatakot kayo 'yung gamit dun sa our ITM. 'Yung mga koroby po, like we have the polio, we have, you know, the other organisms, measles, dengue, which can be agents of bioterrorism.
Kaya nga 'yung sabi ni, sabi ni Senator Lance, sa panahon ng terrorism, CBRN, chemical, biological, radiological, ano 'yang in, nuclear. Kung ako 'yung terrorist, ako ISIS, hanapi ko 'yung our ITM, pwede ako, ah, tama, pwede akong magpapasok ng tao doon? Ding na, alam mo, alam mo na. Posibi, posibilidad lang?
Oo, wag kayo magkamali, nasubukan 'yan dahil mas dadami ang mga, mga customer ng Philippine Mortuary Association. And that, that is for sure na mangyayari po, pag gagawin niyo 'yan sa mga Pilipino. Anyway, we take note the position of everyone. The issues and points are well taken. Again, let me emphasize to the DOH, please intensify your efforts both in the immunization program and health information campaign. Sa mga kapatid nating Pilipino, magtiwala po tayo sa gobyerno. Due to lack of time, we need to set a second hearing for the anti-hospital detention bills. Thank you for attending this hearing. This hearing is hereby suspended.